Welcome to our March the 7th Board Work Session for the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices as they may interfere with the microphones and the taping of the work session. Ms. Williams, would you please lead us in the Board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies. Being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Ms. Ellis, would you please call the row?
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows? Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray? Ms. Page? Ms. Queen? Ms. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace?
I'm here.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Thornton?
Here. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. May I have a motion to adopt the March 7th Board Work Session Agenda? It's been properly moved and seconded that the agenda before you be adopted, hearing no discussion. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, say no. The ayes have it. Colleagues, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for our February 19th Budget Work Session and FY Proposed Operating Budget Hearing of February 21st? Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded that the minutes from our February 19th and 21st Budget Work Sessions be approved. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. We'll now move to a news break focused on youth apprenticeship programs in Prince George's County.
Look around you. Signs of growth and economic development are everywhere. The message is clear. Skilled labor is necessary now more than ever.
Right now, we're splicing the wire, 10-gauge wire.
Herb, you can connect that to the cam right there.
Prince George's County Public Schools is providing scholars a unique pathway to fulfill today's demanding workforce requirements. It's called the Youth Apprenticeship Program, the first of its kind in the state of Maryland.
We made sure that they had this type of experiential learning so that it wasn't just a textbook experience, that it was hands-on.
This is a touch and feel, and it's a very creative program.
And more importantly, one that fills a critical need.
It's fine just as it is. Same with this one.
Middle-skill jobs like masonry, electrical, and plumbing require education beyond a high school diploma, but not necessarily a four-year degree. Currently, these types of jobs make up the largest part of the labor market in the United States, and some estimates suggest in the next five years nearly 50% of all job openings will be middle-skill.
Right now, there is a shortage in qualified and skilled trade workers.
So Prince George's County Public Schools is stepping up to provide those industries the workers they need. Workers like Crossland graduate Timothy Atchison, who's now a master electrician and entrepreneur.
Going into a trade is something that shouldn't be a Plan B. I really feel as though it should be a Plan A. It gives you opportunities to have a career that isn't going to cost you $100-plus thousand with debt over their head graduating.
Congratulations. You're a pioneer.
At the recent kickoff event, the district disseminated information to parents and scholars. Here's how the program works. Beginning their 11th grade year, selected scholars commence core training in the fields of their choice, earning industry-recognized credentials.
So they walk away not with just a diploma, but also with certifications, and they're also very employable.
But here's what makes the program truly unique. In the summer between 11th and 12th grades, scholars work full-time with school district maintenance personnel while earning a salary.
This apprenticeship as a whole, during the summertime, making $15 an hour, making way more than I'm making now, it's just awesome.
So spread the word. This is a truly unique program, and it's a game changer. Upon graduation, scholars have the opportunity to continue education at Prince George's Community College.
It makes them really career-ready day one when they're on the job.
There's also this. Prince George's County Agencies will grant preferential hiring to youth apprenticeship participants.
We're not only telling you we're going to give you the skills, the training, and the certifications, we're also going to guarantee you placement. In a lot of places, they will do a lot of training, but they will not guarantee placement.
So the opportunity is here.
A lot of those huge masonry companies, they're tapping into the high schools. They want to interview the kids.
Take control of your financial future.
Programs like this actually is a way that we put our money where our mouth is. We're actually preparing students right now for their careers.
It's an amazing feeling to know that I can, you know, be a provider.
Apply today to the Youth Apprenticeship Program. Prince George's County Public Schools is providing the pathway.
Very impressive. Colleagues, let me remind the public that applications for the apprenticeship program are due on March the 12th, those families and students who are interested in the program. We'll now move to the public comment part of our agenda. I would ask those who've signed up to speak to be guided by the comments that were given to you in terms of the length of time that you are to speak and the manner in which you are to direct your comments. I would ask that Ms. Stephanie Powell-Williams to please come forward. Ms. Williams will speak to us regarding teacher compensation. Ms. Williams?
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Powell, and I wear many hats. So I come to you as an educator to speak on compensation. I first would like to thank you for allowing me to present some narratives on behalf of educators and support staff that I work with, the educators that educate my children, and the educators that I conversed with on a regular basis. I have seen teachers arrive at their school building at 6:00 AM in the morning and leave at 6:00 and 7:00 PM to start and complete their duties long before their scholars arrive and long after their scholars leave. Please note not being compensated with overtime or any additional funds. This we do because we truly want to impact the young mind we teach, keep parents informed, plan and grade papers, and be ready to receive them the next day. I also have educators that have to run out of the building, schoolhouse, as soon as their tour of duties have been concluded because they have to run to another two and three jobs because the salary they are currently receiving cannot pay their rent, mortgage, car note, and not to mention their student loans. Mind you, some of us have acquired over $100,000 in student loans to better our craft as masters educators. Most of us will not make this amount to pay this off as our salary is capped at Step 20, and many of us are still four steps behind. This affects our pension and our ability to truly thrive and survive in one of the richest African-American counties per an article published in the Washington Post in 2015. Here's the query. Why is it with that title, we are unable to pay our educators and support staff? What they are worth and what they truly deserve? How many of you have given up Four Steps as a PGPS Board Member? How many of you are unable to make ends meet? As I stated earlier, I/we have wear many hats, have worn many hats, and are still wearing many hats. As we are often told, data drives instruction. I took the liberty to gather some data of my own to highlight the many hats/jobs we perform as educators and support staff. Even though the last time I checked, my Advanced Professional Certificate, it states educator. However, I'm an exterminator. We have to put traps down to catch the mouse. That's $14.14 per hour. I'm a doctor or pediatrician. That's $81 an hour. I am a nurse. That's $45.21. Psychologist, $48.00. Counselor, $27.23. A lawyer, $90, and that's just the minimum. A scientist, $46.00. Reading specialist, $34.02. Mathematician, I am $38 an hour. Advocate, $27.75. A speech pathologist, $55 an hour. Transmitter, $30.00. Custodian, $14.00. Security guard, $11.35. A clerk/secretary, $19.00. Travel agent, $15.18. A whopping $520.85 per hour with all the job that I do. Okay, now. However, I am not asking you to pay us $520, $520.85 per hour. But what I'm asking you to do, and we're requesting, that you make sure that our steps, the lost steps have been reinstated, as well as honor, I heard that just now. Put your action, put your money, put your action where your mouth is, where your word is. Give us what is due to us. Give us what is due. You look at a doctor, they have an assistant. You look at a pilot, they have a co-pilot. But we are asked and tasked as educators to do all of these things, not being compensated.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Please, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do what you know is right, and make sure that you fund education so that the teachers can be compensated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Martin Diggs, investing in good customer service. Mr. Diggs, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Just want to talk about customer service. We must take it a priority to invest in PG County employees for them to give good customer service. Now, I'm going to say to you all, I want to say to you some things that are said to us as bus drivers on a regular basis. How in the world can you drive a bus with all of that going on behind you? Another thing that is said to us is that we're driving tomorrow's future with all these kids on the bus. But when we ask for the money that we need in order to make a living, we get told we got to find the money for that. It's not really fair for us. Now, how can we be told that same thing that we're driving so many invaluable kids, so many invaluable future, but at the same time not pay us accordingly? That's just unfair. We have truck drivers who haul around trash. They get paid actually more than we do. They get paid anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000 starting pay when the starting pay for a PG County bus driver is only roughly about $26,000 a year. But still, we're told we're driving tomorrow's biggest and brightest future. Now, if you think about it, I know it was an older board, a different board than what's here right now. But the previous board, when it came up to the issue of talking to Maxwell about getting the money that he was going to get, and he's not even here, that question wasn't asked about where we're going to get the money from. Other things were looked at. And when pay raises was given out, nothing was said about that either. Nothing was said about where we're going to get the money from. The money was there. When I look into things that we can actually do to increase our pay, not necessarily always look for something to save, but something to increase our pay. For example, we have PG County's buses that have cameras on them. And in other counties, and in Maryland, there's a fee that is assessed with passing these buses with kids loading the buses. And in Maryland, it's $1,000. Now, if we have some buses that have that on them, who's accountable for actually keeping track of when that money comes in or what happens? Even make sure that our kids are safe. It's not just a money issue. It's also about keeping our kids safe. We got to see, I want you guys to see that they are good people that drive these school buses. Real good people who want to do a good job, who want to come to work, and they want to work. But they just want a fair pay for what they do. And all we ask you to do is just give us the money, and we'll do a good job with smiles on our faces and less negative emails in your email box.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. The next speaker is Sharon Upari regarding Community Workforce Agreements. Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and members of the Board for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Sharon Upari. I live in Heightsville with my husband and two small children. My daughter is in the first grade, and my son is in kindergarten. As a mother of two little ones, I am pleased that we have a robust budget to build new schools and renovate others. However, the first-class education system we are creating should be built with first-class, high-quality construction jobs. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, workers in the construction industry have less access to many types of benefits than workers in other industries. Through a community workforce agreement, the Board can require school construction contractors to provide their workers with access to affordable health insurance and 401K or pension plans. And while my children are too young for us to know what career they will ultimately select, when they are older, I want them to have the opportunity to join an apprenticeship program and work on quality projects where they have access to benefits. Other school districts across the country are using targeted hiring programs and community workforce agreements to make sure local residents benefit from school construction projects. These include urban school districts like Cincinnati, Syracuse, and Cleveland, and counties like Los Angeles, Orange, and Solano. As a Prince George's County taxpayer, it is important to me that our school construction budget creates quality jobs for our residents. I urge the Board to follow the lead of these other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Upari. The next speaker is Jonathan Viera regarding Community Workforce Agreements. Please come forward, sir. And Mr. Diaz, Ray Diaz, if you're prepared to come forward, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and members of the Board of Education for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jonathan Viera. I live in Bellesville, District 1. Me and my two children live there. My oldest son is attending kindergarten. It's his first year, and he's enjoying it very much. It's my understanding that this Board is evaluating the Community Workforce Agreement on school construction projects. I'm here to encourage every one of you to actually move forward towards that. With these agreements, we could set higher requirements, have more county residents to work than otherwise. You can set requirements for recent graduates, returning citizens, women, veterans, to other groups indeed. With this apprenticeship program, standards for pre-apprentices could go to contractors and work this work. You can require contracts to provide affordable healthcare, a retirement plan, benefits. Please look at the school construction projects, not simply erecting the building. They can be vehicles for changing the economic opportunity. When we hire locally, we generate more local spending for our businesses and more tax revenue for county to spend on programs and services. Other school districts across the nation have already adopting community workforce agreements. We should too. Thank you for this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Diaz, please come forward.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Ray Diaz. I'm from the Lanley Park area in District 3. I grew up in the county and graduated from Hypo High School in 1995. I understand that the Board is considering Community Workforce Agreements, or CWAs for short. I urge you to test them out. They've been successful in other school districts, so they can be successful here as well. What is great about CWAs is that you can customize them to reflect the school board's priorities and the needs of the county. With that in mind, I urge you to include creating job opportunities for disadvantaged residents in the county like returning citizens, as was forementioned, high school dropouts, and recent graduates. We also should be linking school construction to apprenticeship programs that create a pathway to the middle class. I think we saw that in the video prior. The statistics indicate the need is there. We live in a county where about 40% of high school graduates do not attend college, and also where more than 78,000 residents live in poverty. We also need job quality standards on school construction projects. When I graduated from high school, I became a construction laborer. What I can tell you from the days in the field is that many, many construction contractors do not offer affordable health insurance to their workforce. Instead, these contractors offer health plans with ridiculous premiums and deductibles. When you're a laborer and the plans are really expensive, you just can't afford to participate. Unfortunately, instead, you forego preventive care and rely on the emergency room when you're really sick. It's no way to live. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. The next speaker is Felix Rodriguez. If you'll please come forward. And Mr. Victor Reyes, if you're prepared to speak, sir. Mr. Rodriguez, please proceed.
Thank you for the chance to speak tonight. My name is Felix Rodriguez. I am longtime resident of Bellesville. I live here with my wife and family. I am proud that our county is building new school for our children. However, I would like us to look at this construction project as an economic engine. We have many residents who need jobs, and we should be demanding that this construction job create meaningful employment, a pathway to the middle class. As a Board of Education, you can have the power to adopt policies like this. I urge you to do so.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Thomas, Vaughn Thomas. Victor Reyes, I'm sorry. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Victor Reyes. I live in Prince George County. I was here in February 22. I am back tonight to thank Chairman Thornt and Vice Chairman Burrow to listen to my concern. I hope the Board will adopt a policy for a school construction project that create quality job opportunities for residents. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Now, Mr. Thomas, please come forward.
Good evening, Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, and all the members of the Board. My name is Vaughn Thomas. I spoke here on February 22. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak that night as well. So it's important for the school construction project creating quality jobs. Prince George's County Public Schools does a great job creating quality jobs for its teachers and administrators. Those who build and renovate the schools desire quality jobs as well. I was really happy that Vice Chair Burrows heard our concerns and raised the topic for a community and workforce agreement to put the residents to work with quality construction jobs. I think that was a great idea. I urge the Board to follow through. In addition, I am here with the following Laona members. With Laona, we have more than 7,000 members in the D.C. metro area. A third of those members are PG Prince George's County residents. On the behalf of Laona too, I urge to adopt a community workforce agreement. Thank you for allowing me to speak again.
Thank you, sir, and thanks to all who came with you. The final speaker is Ms. Jaron Levy. Did Ms. Levy arrive? I know she was coming. Okay, Levi, Levy. Okay. That exhausts our speakers list for this evening. Before I move to the discussion item for this evening and turn the floor over to Dr. Golson, I'd like to, the Board was hit with some very unfortunate developments over the past couple of weeks. We lost, among our staff, we lost dear members of their family. And I'm going to ask the Board colleagues and everyone for a moment of silence. Three of our staff members lost members of their family. Ms. Berkeley, Aisha Berkeley is a member of Board Staff, lost her mother. Ms. Juanita Wyatt. Ms. Tate, who's a member of the Board Staff, lost her father, Mr. John Tate Jr. And Ms. Woodson, who's also a member, Brianna Woodson, is also a member of our staff, lost her grandmother, Ms. Rebecca Brown. So if we could have a moment of silence for our staff and their family members. Thank you very much. Dr. Golson, would you give us, please, a legislative update? Following Dr. Golson's update, colleagues, we will have two rounds, if necessary, of five minutes each. Five minutes is inclusive of your questions as well as any staff responses. Dr. Golson, the floor is now yours.
Good evening, Dr. Thornton and members of the Board of Education. Ms. Demetria Tivias will provide an overview of the legislative update in response to any of your questions or concern. Ms. Tivias?
Good evening.
Good evening.
You all have been provided with a written copy of the legislative update. There's a lot of information in there, obviously, to just keep you up to date on the local bills that we've been following, many of the major statewide bills that we've been following, the state budget, as well as the current commission. So what I will do is I will just plug in a couple of quick updates for you, information that has kind of developed over the last couple of days since the written report has been submitted, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. And then lastly, there are two bills for your consideration in action. The current commission bill, and also a bill on juvenile diversion programs that was requested by Mr. Burrows to be brought to your Board, and we will address those two bills at the conclusion of the quick updates. Briefly, under the local bills and positions that you took at your February 7th meeting, there are a couple of things we just wanted to share with you. One is that the delegation moved favorably on the Financial Literacy Curriculum Bill. It was amended. The bill was amended to create a pilot program in at least one of our high schools by school year 21 to have a semester-long course in financial literacy. Those amendments were accepted and passed the delegation favorably, and on yesterday, the House Ways and Means Committee also voted favorably on those. So we're expecting that that would go to the full House for a vote, and it's presumed to pass, and will then follow it in the Senate. At this point, that is the only local bill that is actually moving out of the Education Committee that has actually, has moved, let me say, out of the Education Committee. Secondly, on our local bills, as you recall, there was a major bill creating an Office of Accountability and Compliance, or Inspector General Bill, depending on who you speak with, but essentially creating an inspector general-type position in the school system. That, we have received amendments this afternoon to that bill. It has been substantially changed. Essentially, the entire bill has been gutted and is being used as a vehicle to change the CEO's appointment process and the role of both the state and the county executive. We have not had time to fully digest the amendments to analyze and to provide a recommendation to this Board, and so we will do that and provide you with an updated analysis by your next meeting. But we just wanted to make you aware that those changes were pending. And then finally, you had voted at your last meeting to support the Reading Screening Intervention Bill. There are several amendments that are pending right now before the Senate's Education Committee. Essentially, that would provide greater flexibility to the local school systems with the type of screening tool that they use, so that the substance of the bill would remain intact in terms of requiring the screening, the diagnostic assessment. intact in terms of requiring the screening, the diagnostic assessment for students who are shown to be having trouble, the intervention and the follow-up by the school system. But the language, it looks like the language is going to be relaxed a little bit in terms of how that tool has to look and what kind of schedule that the school system has to follow in its intervention methods. So as soon as those amendments are finalized, I'll be sure to provide you with an updated copy as well. But the board's support for that bill was submitted one time for both the hearings in the Senate and in the House. Moving on to the state budget, I think everyone is well aware of the significant write-downs that are being expected as a result of the federal government shutdown. The state, the House Appropriations Committee is going to be voting on a final budget tomorrow. All of the subcommittees are going to be providing their recommendations, and there's much that we're looking for in this budget. Among other things, there, a big question that's looming is where the remaining money for the funding, for the current commission recommendations is going to come from. If you recall, the governor has appropriated thirty-six million in the budget. There's another two hundred million that's sitting from last year, but that leaves somewhere in the neighborhood of about ninety million dollars that's unaccounted for as of today, although I'm sure that the budget experts already have a place for it. So there's a lot that the education advocates are looking for in terms of the decisions that are going to be announced tomorrow and any shifts that are also going to happen in public education funding as a result of any of the write-downs that are expected. So as soon as we get some more information on that tomorrow, I'll be sure to keep the board briefed on any updates on that as well. Current commission, one billion dollars over the next two years, a huge, huge down payment, if you will, to kick off their major priorities. Prince George's County among, every school system is in position to receive something, but the promises that are kind of embedded in the bill are quite substantial. They are hitting the current's top priorities, pre-K, all-day pre-K for four-year-old students, teacher raises to help raise the standards and the compensation for the staff who are working with our students every day, all day, special education funding, struggling learner grants, especially designed to provide additional services and assistance for our English learners, our students with disabilities, our students in schools with high concentration of poverty, concentration of poverty grants for schools that have at least eighty percent of students who qualify for free and reduced-price meals, and the funding significantly with that grant is earmarked for a mental health services coordinator and a nurse health practitioner or some type of health practitioner to help meet these, all of these other needs that these students often come to the school with and to provide more resources for the wraparound services that they're need. So it is truly just a very comprehensive look at kind of kickstarting the current commission's priorities. But again, there's much that we're looking at as the session unfolds over the next three weeks, including the funding, including, you know, the governor's support and any potential amendments that may come to the bill. But you have provided in your report, one, you have provided in your report, starting on page seven, an outline of the bill. It's very large, but this is just kind of a synthesis of it, and this is one of the bills that we are presenting to you for an official position so that the school system's position may also be on record with other boards of education in the state. And lastly, under the area of state bill highlights and also bills of interest from some of our board members, you have information in the report on just some of the major bills that we're following. Keep in mind that there are literally hundreds of education-related bills that are pending. Some have died, some are dying, but by the time we get to crossover March eighteenth, we'll have a much firmer view of what really has a likelihood of passing. So there'll be a much smaller number of bills to track, but a whole lot more work trying to stay on top of what's being changed. But what you have before you is information on public school construction bills. Significantly, there's a bill in there specifically geared towards PG CPS, which I think all of you are aware of, that would allow us to take advantage of P-three partnerships and advance our public school construction agenda. That is one of about six other statewide bills that are pending regarding public school construction, so we are obviously keeping a very close tabs on that bill. You also have information in there on school safety, curriculum, and then several, there were a few other miscellaneous bills that a couple of members requested feedback on, and that's included. But the last bill that we were asked to discuss is the juvenile law diversion bill from, was shared with Mr. Burrows from the state's attorney's office, but, and I believe that a copy of the bill was uploaded for your review on board docs. But what that bill does is it provides an option for juveniles who are, who have been charged with serious crimes, provides an option for a diversion program in lieu of either criminal charges or a number of the other tools, if you will, that the state's attorney's office has in her toolbox. It establishes a diversion program for Prince George's County. And I'm not, Mr. Burrows, I'm not sure if you want to speak further on it because I know that this is your area of expertise, but that is, that's the second bill that we wanted to highlight in addition to current. Do you want to speak on that now? Okay, okay, okay. And that's actually it, sir. That, I just wanted to give a brief overview of what's already there, and the two bills, again, for your consideration would be the current legislation and then the juvenile diversion bill.
Colleagues, I thank you, and Ms. Tobias, I think you did a great job at explaining the bill. Colleagues, right now, when a young person commits a crime, they generally go to the Department of Juvenile Services, or they have to go to the Department of Juvenile Services. Based on the Department of Juvenile Services, based on that intake meeting, they can choose to forward it to the state's attorney's office. They can choose to divert the case or drop it at that level. Once it gets to the state's attorney's office, the state's attorney has to determine whether or not to prosecute the young person or drop the case completely. And there are so many cases that I've seen, just in my short time period there, where, you know, we might not, you broke the law, clearly. We don't want to prosecute you, but we want you to be diverted. We want you to have to go through a program. I know board member Belinda Queen is very familiar with CPAC, and I know she does a lot of work with them, a very successful juvenile diversion program in the county. And so the whole goal of this is to tackle that community-school-to-prison pipeline and to, we all know the data around disproportionate, disproportionality in the criminal justice system, and so this is geared to provide those second chances to our students and provide them with the restorative practices and restorative help that PGCA has fought for and that we, as a board and as a system, are moving toward. And so I hope that explains it. I do want to mention that the county executive is in favor of this bill, the county council is in favor of this bill, and the House of Delegates, the last email that I saw unanimously passed the bill out of the House of Delegates. And so this really seems like an issue where, and of course, the state's attorney is in favor of it. It seems like an issue where Prince George's County is leading in the state, and so I would like to, when the time is appropriate, move that the board support this bill along with all of our other county partners to show that, you know, we know that our students make mistakes, just like all the other students make mistakes, and we don't want our students disproportionately impacted. And we believe that with the right restorative supports, the mentoring, the mental health, you know, is definitely a part of those diversions, anger management, all of those things that can make a student better i- is a, in the long term, a better option for our students if we're trying to make them, you know, better citizens. Putting them in the criminal justice system will not help. You know, it should be the absolute last resort, and so I think that's the push in what we're trying to do with this. So, you know, I can make a motion now and just put it on the floor or later?
Mr. Burrows, a motion is appropriate if you want to make one, sir.
Second.
Well, I move to support the bill. Thank you.
A motion is on the floor, colleagues, to support the bill that you've heard just described to you. Any other discussions? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. Dr. Golson, any other reports from legislative?
We also need an official vote for current.
Thank you. Let me say that before my colleagues introduce a motion on that, I am very pleased with what I'm seeing from the progress being made in Annapolis regarding current. The report that you're indicating indicates that the legislature is with the president of the Senate and the speaker and with the governor, that they are aware of the urgency of funding the first phase of current. Of course, I would like to have seen all of it funded in the first year, but I'm a realist. We'll be there on the eleventh to encourage them and support them as they go to the last month or so of this, right? But I'm really encouraged with what I'm seeing. Well, let's take a close look at the extent to which the funding, whatever the amount is, is formula-based, because that's really where it gets directed to where it needs to be directed. So the programmatic thrust is very important, as you described. The distribution based upon a formula specification is most important. So that's what I would like for you to take a look at, make sure that, there is no formula now, other than the one that came from Bridge to Excellence, so we'll make sure that they adhere to that formula as they distribute the funds. So keep us abreast on that particularly. Colleagues, a motion is in order so that we can discuss. Mr. Wallace. Mr. Wallace, you going to make a motion?
I was, but Ms. Queen gave me to. And Ms. Williams said.
A motion is on the floor to support the current legislative initiatives, initiatives that they have been described to us, right? That's the motion on the floor. The board is endorsing what it's seeing from the current developments in Annapolis. That's essentially what we're doing. Ms., Mr. Valentine, is on the motion?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you. I believe you partially answered my question. Ms. Tobias, in your document, you outlined the proposed amount we were eligible for based on that amount, and my question was around how you came to that figure, and I thought it mentioned the formula being based on the previous legislation. And so can you speak to how that formula came about? I'm assuming it's enrollment plus students who are qualified for free and reduced lunch, but my concern is always that we are getting the equitable amount for our county, and that if it's, if we're going to use a more subjective calculation, and that's fine, but to make sure that we are getting what we deserve based on the need here in the county.
So excellent question. So the numbers that you see in the report are literally in the bill. Okay, so the calculations were done before the bill was introduced, and that is the figure that's provided in the legislation. It's based on this year's formula. As you know, the commission had to essentially break their work up in two, so this year is focusing primarily on the thrust of the policy recommendations. They're going to spend the remainder of the year working out the revised formulas and what it's going to look like from the state and from the locals. So literally, however they came up with the numbers in the bill, it's based on today's formula, not what the future will hold.
Thank you.
And if I could, that's why it's so important to, as we narrate this, to make sure we raise up the formula, because that's the mandate that directs resources to us. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Tobias, as always, for your work in Annapolis, my second hometown. On the motion to support the recommendations, I just wanted to get from the administration any sense of direct impact. Hopefully, this bill does pass, but the direct impact to the school system, whether it's our operations or our FY twenty-twenty budget, and if there's some grants that we may have to match and stuff like that, can you speak to that impact?
So based on what was presented tonight with no changes, we are geared up to receive a substantial increase to our FY twenty budget in several areas, as previously identified, pre-K, poverty grants based on a percentage of the number of students who are already identified as free and reduced meal students, and incentive for teachers as long as we're able to substantially put a down payment in order to receive a grant to get that additional funding, and then special education, just to name a few. Some of the components and requirements require us to do specific things in order to receive that funding. And this is where we sit today, where we sit by sunny day. We will continue to brief the Board of Education to determine next steps. But it is our hope that there are several jurisdictions. I only care about Prince George's right now, and my expectation and hope is that we'll continue to speak to our elected officials that on March eleventh will go out and continue to advocate so that we can get the funding required for Prince George's County based on our population.
And would that, would that impact include any shifting of the board-approved budget? Well, I guess we have to get it back from the county council.
So there's another factor. So what we're speaking of tonight is really state funding. We still have not had a conversation or been awarded, had a conversation with the county council and our county government on what we will receive from our county government in terms of our request for our fiscal year twenty-twenty funding. I'm sure that what we receive from the state will also come into play with what we will receive from the county, but we haven't received that yet either.
Thank you. Are you all back?
Thank you. Colleagues, the vote is on the motion as read. Any other discussion? Hearing, Ms. Queen? Ms. Queen?
I'm sorry, I thought I'd already pushed the button. I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, and actually, I wanted to be here. I'm so glad that in Annapolis, that they're working really hard to bring money back to Prince George's County, that our legislators that represent us are working hard, because it's important. A lot of them actually campaigning on, you know, putting kids first and saying that education was important, and so the fight that they're doing is showing that. And to you, my fellow board members, I want to say the same thing also. Thank you guys for realizing as we work together to put kids first for a change, because it makes a difference when everything is done by the kids, but I ask that we continue to demand more, and I ask that we continue to do better as we continue to not only put kids first for a change, but make sure, as you heard, that our employees are also put first for a change, and that we look at our unions and we learn to work together for the future of Prince George's County. And thank you, sir, for giving me the time.
Thank you, my colleague. Colleagues, the vote is now on the motion as read. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. Mr. Wallace.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to speak on some of the other bills I worked on.
That's fine.
Ms. Tobias, and I guess that should be requested as follow-up, but some of the, my miscellaneous bills that I submitted, I guess we're not tracking them specifically because they're more higher education-focused, but the HBCU bill and what is being done around the state, could you just speak to that a little bit? I know it's been a big issue for almost a decade and a half now through the legal courts of the state of Maryland, but I know there's some movement on it.
Yeah, so there's, for probably over a decade, there's been active litigation at the state level regarding both a pattern of underfunding of HBCUs in the state.
Twenty-five years.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, twenty-five. A pattern of underfunding and also of providing, basically, an advantage to non-HBCU institutions in terms of the types of programming that they offer. Mr. Wallace, I apologize, I don't know what the status is of the state's negotiation. I know that President Miller, Governor Hogan, everybody's been on board saying this needs to stop and there needs to be a settlement. I don't know exactly what the posture is at this point, but your question, one of the questions that you raised regarding the bill is the extent to which we track the percentage or numbers of our students who actually go to HBCUs. What I was able to find out from our staff is we have an exit survey that our high school seniors will sign or will complete, but it's voluntary, and that's telling us where they intend to go. We don't actually have a way to track where they actually enroll. So I have some information I can give you based off of the survey in twenty-eighteen on intentions, but you just have to understand, take plus or minus fifty percent of those students may not have actually enrolled, but that's the data that we have available regarding our graduates.
I appreciate that. And colleagues, just so you know where my thoughts are on this, Ms. Amanda, you remember back our time at University System of Maryland when you were the student regent where students from Bowie State and... when you were the, uh, student regent, where students from Bowie State and, uh, Coppin and UMSA all came and they were, they were, and Morgan State, but they're not part of the university system. They were fighting for equitable funding. And I was kind of the poster child of that fight, because here I am, a black student, went to Towson for undergrad, University of Baltimore for graduate school, and two of those schools are in the daggone lawsuit, um, for recruiting students that, like me. So, my heart is definitely supporting our HBCUs. I know I can find some resolve in that a lot of my colleagues can, uh, can support that effort if we so need to submit a letter of support. Thank you, Mr. Chair, you all back?
Thank you, sir, thank you. And then, Mr. Valentine?
I would recommend, if, if, if there, if you want that information, maybe you can contact those universities here in, in the, in the state and ask them for their enrollment and where the students originate from. I'm assuming you do want tho, only those HPU students who are actually in the state. But if you go to those universities, their enrollment office would probably get that information based on, um, where those students graduated from. That's something they definitely track.
Thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, and Dr. Golson, um, thank you for this presentation. Thank you for the great work that you're doing in Annapolis on our behalf, we appreciate that. Colleagues, we'll now move to, um, the second reader items and unfinished business. Uh, the first one is five-one, board committee structure and ad hoc focus groups. We've had some discussion of this. The lead, um, board member on this is Ms. Ahmed. Uh, Ms. Ahmed, I'll introduce you first.
Thank you. Um, colleagues, y'all know this policy's been a journey. It really has. I remember having conversations about, uh, committee restructure and focus work groups uh, with select members back in November. And after months with your support, we got it on the agenda, uh, in January to be heard. At our board retreat at the end of February, we discussed, uh, the committee restructure, we discussed focus work groups, and upon suggestion from a few board members, incorporating some really good committees into the policy, uh, once again. What you have before you on board docs is a merger of the desirable pieces of the current policy on committees with the focus work group policy that's been before the board several times now. I wanna thank especially, uh, our board leadership, uh, Dr. Thornton and Vice Chair Burrows for their guidance on this matter. And I'm in the absence of functioning committees for several months now. I'm excited to have an improved structure that'll help us do the most and best for PGCPs students. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve this policy.
There's a motion on the floor to appro, approve, uh, the restructuring of the committee structure of the board with the addition of ad hoc focus work groups. The floor's now open for discussion. Uh, Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I wanna thank, uh, my colleague, Ms. Ahmed, for hearing some of the, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna call them concerns, some of the feedback that, uh, some of the board members had around keeping some structure. Uh, as I said at the retreat, uh, I looked at this proposal from not only the lens here, but the lens as, as chair, as the president of the Washington Area Boards of Education, where every other large jurisdiction around us, they do have board committees of some form. Did they, or do they have seven? No, right? Uh, so I agree that it needs to be reduced, and I'm very thankful of the proposal that was put forth of a, a collaboration and a, and a compromise. What I would ask, Mr. Chair, is some guidance on this is, uh, when we would actually have full running committees and, and our work groups, and when we would likely have, um, a full roster of board members serving.
If, once the board, uh, makes a decision regarding this matter, a large part of the responsibility then redeems, uh, turns to me to work with the board, to staff the committees, appoint people to the committees, um, and to work with board members to make sure that they are operational, and, uh, and I will do that. Ms., uh, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Chair. And I appreciate all the work that, uh, my colleague, uh, put, put forth in pulling this together. I think that it's a great opportunity for us to really focus on not only the long-term, um, work that we do with the board committees, but to be able to focus on specializing or strategically looking at activities that are pointed and guided with a direct outcome. The committees are expected to look at the long-term effect of what we do as a board, and the work groups are here to look at specific actions. So, I appreciate the work that is put forward. I look forward to, um, having an opportunity to dive deep into what's proposed here. So, again, thank you for your work.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, Ms. Queen?
Thank you, sir. I just wanna, um, say the same thing that my colleagues just said. I just wanna thank my colleague for taking the time to do this, because it did take, um, a lot of time to go and do this. And I just wanna let you know that we do appreciate it. Um, and, and I, and I also wanna, all of you know that I respect all of your decisions, no matter what, because I know we're a diverse board and we may not agree on going forward with this, but we do agree on it, and I just wanna let you know that I do respect each and every one of your decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Uh, I just wanna, uh, echo the support for, uh, Board Member Ahmed, and, and thank you for your leadership and your initiative on this. Um, and, and I know that this is something that you've worked very hard for, but also that we all agree that we want. Uh, we have been through, um, weeks and now months of deliberating over this. And, uh, what I wanna just urge and remind my colleagues of is the fact that, though we agree on the idea of moving forward with, uh, work groups and, and committees, we still haven't had them in place. And every meeting wi, with which we decide to put this off, um, means it could be as many as two, as few as two weeks, um, but can also turn into months, as we've seen. So, I, I do urge, uh, my colleagues to, um, really consider moving this forward. And, uh, I know that there's also some concerns about, uh, not having, not being able to review. Uh, but please note that the policy is four pages. You, you, um, have had time, uh, throughout today, but also, um, even now. Should you have questions or concerns in particular, to, to, to voice them. Um, so just wanted to voice my support, um, for this motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burrows. Uh, you, I'm calling on you next, uh, Mr. Burrows.
I, uh, was trying to pull up another slide.
Oh, if you wanna, you wanna?
Yeah, but if, if, if there's not anyone before me, then I will.
If you need some more time, I'll recognize, uh, Ms. Boozer Struthers.
Yes, uh, I as well would like to thank Ms. Ahmed and everyone who put time into this. And, um, I, I would like a little more time to digest this document. I do appreciate that it, that it, we received it today, but it has been in process and, uh, but to go, this is a very important policy. It's how we govern ourselves, and I do feel like, um, to best represent my constituents, I should, uh, allowing us another two weeks to review this. And I particularly want to make sure I'm comfortable with the governance section. I would ask my colleagues, um, to consider just a couple, couple more weeks to make sure we all do our due diligence on the, the text. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows?
Uh, I'm gonna, um, yield to Ms. Ahmed on that point. Uh, colleagues, um, we haven't had functioning committees since before the last election. We are eager to work, roll up our sleeves to tackle important issues that face our students. I wanna thank you, Ms. Ahmed, for spending weeks, uh, collaborating and submitting drafts. And I believe what you did was take all of the feedback from the retreat, incorporate that in this proposal. I saw, uh, close to midnight last night, you and the chair were going back and forth. Uh, so I do wanna thank you both for working together on this final product. Uh, and, you know, I am prepared to vote, but I'll yield to your leadership on this because you've worked so hard on it. The, the, this policy has not changed significantly since the retreat. I mean, literally, I believe what, what Ms. Ahmed did was write down all of your feedback and incorporate that into the proposal that we have before us today.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Burrows. Ms. Williams?
I would like to echo the sentiment of, uh, my colleague, uh, Ms. Pamela Struthers. And I do appreciate the work that was done by Ms. Ahmed. And in hearing that from midnight till about two this afternoon, work was being done on it. And, you know, we were given from two till about five o'clock to review it. I think that this, this, um, this, the change to this policy deserves us as a board to review it and to give some guidance, ideas, confirm or, or not confirm some of the things, some of the detail. When we're talking about how we operate as a, as a governing body, we wanna make sure all the ayes are dotted and t's are crossed. This is the first time that we've seen it in this format. So, I think two weeks is, is ample time for us to review it. And it's a little time for us to wait on something that is this important, that's gonna change how we operate as a board. So, I, I would absolutely encourage my colleagues to support pushing it back just two weeks.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Williams, I do want to say, as Chair, um, how much I appreciate working with Ms. Ahmed on this initiative. And, uh, it was a very enjoyable experience working with you on that. And I think the product is representative of, of, of the board and the consensus of, of the board. And I, I hope we'll be able to come away from this meeting with a consensus as to how we'll proceed as a united board on this. It's a good product, and hopefully, nothing we'll do now will divide the board regarding how we move forward. Ms. Queen?
Again, I want to just say that no matter how you guys vote, I will respect your vote. But I just wanna let you know, when, when I was elected by District Six School, I mean, to be the representative of District Six, the constituent knew what I could do. They elected me because I was the best candidate, okay? And if you give me something in ten minutes, trust me, I'm gonna do it a hundred percent to the best of my ability. It is not about what it take, we were elected to represent. These boards have, I mean, the committees have been in place for years, it's just a little change to it, um, some of the committees. But you guys should've been ready to serve from day one. No matter what is given to you, you gotta be ready, cause it's not about us and us reading it and going over it. We gotta be ready to serve District Six. So, when we make this vote, let's think about, we were elected to represent, not two weeks from now, but right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Colleagues, we have three board board members to speak. We have three board, board members to speak, and then we will take a vote. Um, Ms., uh, Mr. Valentine?
Just a poor clarification from council. If this is, is voted down, uh, Mr. Lucci, what happens?
Uh, just a moment, just a moment. You would ask the question of me?
Mr. Chair, if this, if this vote is, if this is voted down, what happens next?
There would be an opportunity for an alternative motion, another motion. Or someone can introduce a substitute motion now.
Okay, that's my, my question. Um, I would, I would say as a statement, uh, I would agree with the Vice Chair, Mr. Burrows, in that, um, it has been a while since we have functioned, um, in our committee as a, as a former, uh, Chair of, of a committee. It did give me great concern, particularly as related to the legislative, uh, piece. I'm glad that we made, um, a concession in ensuring that at least we function as a committee of the whole as it relates to, um, legislative issues, especially during the legislative session. At the same time, I do agree with my colleagues that it's important that we do, uh, our due diligence as it relates to policy that's going to impact, um, the work of this board moving forward. Uh, and so, though while I do support the work that you all have put in, I do, I know it's important that we do do our due diligence, uh, as it relates to, uh, all board policy.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Ahmed?
Oh, I didn't buzz it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Burrows?
Um, colleagues, I have a, uh, something for us to consider. Based on, um, the Chair speaking very calmly about us coming together on this on the day is, Ms. Ahmed and Ms. Booze Struthers, two different points of view. Let's see if we can pull this together, uh, in a substitute motion. And I would like you both to consider, um, allowing this to be on the agenda for a, uh, vote at our next meeting, but also allowing the work groups, any work groups. That was the current plan, that we would approve this today, present the work groups at the next meeting, and right at the next meeting, those work groups would start. So, let's submit all of our work group stuff in by next week so that really functionally, nothing has changed, no, nothing will back down our timeline, because we were planning on voting on this today, approving the work groups on March twenty-first. If we do it at the same meeting, we will have time to review the, the policy and, uh, make whatever amendments ahead of time. That amended version will be uploaded to board docs. We will approve whatever work groups that we want. The policy is not gonna significantly change between now and then. Um, the board chair will, um, begin to think about, um, who's gonna be on what committees before then, consult with the members before then, so that on the twenty-first, uh, we hit the ground running, which was essentially the plan anyway.
Mr. Burrows, you're, you're normally very concise and specific in the motion you're making, so what is your motion?
Well, uh, so, are, are you guys, Pam and Marily, you okay with that? Okay, so I moved to, to, to make a substitute motion to, to, um, to, to table this item to the next board meeting. Uh, allow Ms. Booze Struthers and Ms. Ahmed, any member, to submit amendments to Ms. Ahmed ahead of time. Those amendments will be uploaded to board docs, um, a week before the meeting. We can, we can have that out to everyone. And also, within the next two weeks.
The amendments will be submitted to the Chair.
Okay, to the Chair. And, um, they will be uploaded to board docs. And the Chair could start thinking about who would serve on which committee, start consulting with members. And then, we'll hit the ground running on March twenty-first.
A second. That motion, uh, substitute motion is on the floor, um, and all discussion would please be directed at that. And before I recognize, uh, Ms. Ahmed, let me just say that, um, I do support the, the substitute. I, cause we certainly can begin to do some work. Uh, I certainly would begin to do some work as Chair. I do not expect, though, Mr. Bur, Burrows, a flood of work groups, because work groups are, as you know from the document, it's not something that members just flood the board with work groups. It's a very time-specific. The one that I know is ready is this community school to prison pipeline. I know that's ready, cause we worked on it together. Uh, so with that caveat, I certainly would encourage support of the substitute. Um, Ms., uh, Booze Struthers, yes?
Thank you. I appreciate the, uh, alternative motion, and, uh, definitely want to state that I'm, uh, fully in support of the, what is the very significant substantive change is the work groups, and in fact, have been already, uh, working on two proposals and appreciate the, um, you know, working towards it during these next two weeks. So, I did wanna make clear that it's the, the substance I'm in agreement with. It's the, um, just making sure that I've done my due diligence with the, with the change in a, in a policy document. So, thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, we have one more speak, and then we'll take a vote. Ms. Ahmed?
Yes, I wanted to add a friendly amendment, which I think is, is, Mr. Burrows, what you had mentioned before, in addition to this focus work group and committee structure policy coming before us again as a second reader, to also have the, any focus work group proposals also come forward. So, if that's not captured in the, uh, the motion, I would like that to be a friendly amendment to the motion. That focus work group proposals would also come, be able to come before the board, uh, at the next board meeting.
I, I hope you would not accept that. Let me, can I speak? Because, uh, as I view the, the focus work group initiative, it is not something that a board member can put together in two weeks, as I view it. It is, it is, it's took, taken a long time to come up with the school, community, school, prison pipeline. I'm viewing the focus work group as something that requires a lot of consideration, deliberation, involvement. So, I hope that's not, you're not assuming that board members will come forward with a lot of?
No, I, I think it's more of, I know that Mr. Burrows has the community school to prison pipeline one, so I would like for, for him and the members that wanna take advantage of that, uh, to be able to per, to move forward with that by it being, um, allowable to be presented at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Otherwise, otherwise, it's simply a motion to table.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bur, Mr. Burrows?
Uh, Ms. Ahmed, um, that was a part of my motion. That was obviously the compromise. Yeah, I mean, I think we all, I've already said that, so that, that should be reflected.
All right, that's the motion that we are just considering. Mr. Wallace?
I just had a quick question, my mic is bad. Had a quick question on the focus work groups. How would the, uh, membership go about this? So, within the proposal, if I have an idea for community school to prison pipeline, I submit the proposal, is that? submit the proposal, is that on first and second reader, or is it just a single vote and then it's established? To Ms. Ahmed.
Per the policy, it says that it would be able to, let me read it. The proposal will be set to the board chair ten working days before scheduled public meeting for inclusion in that meeting's agenda. So there is, I, I would yield to the Chair on that. I think that, in the way that I read it, it's, an action can be taken on that.
And, I'm sorry, you finished? The only thing I'm, I'm, um, trying to get the board's consensus on is the seriousness of the creation of board work groups. And that's the first, as I see this, it is a very, this is, when you, when you create these groups, it should involve collaboration among board members, not just a board member or one or two board members, but the board, because the board has to approve it. So to me, it takes some time, um, for that to occur. That's why I'm asking the board to consider not, uh, I don't want to speak against the motion, because I'm probably going to support it, but the board not, uh, to be in a situation where board members can bring to the next board meeting in two weeks, work groups that the board is asked to vote on. I don't think that's, uh, in the best interest of the board. But, Ms., uh, Boozer Struthers, your light is blinking? No?
I already made my comments.
You made your comment? Okay. Mr. Burrows.
I would just say, um, you know, at the end of the day, democracy will prevail, and so if there's a work group that is presented, I would expect my colleagues to, uh, talk to each other, gather consensus, try to work together, and if there is not agreement among the colleagues, uh, I don't think we will see it on the agenda. I think we can, you know, I think that's where we are on that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Williams.
I just have a clarification question. There isn't a specific timeframe in which we're talking about presenting work groups. We can present work groups throughout the entire year, correct?
Correct.
So those that are ready, you're saying they can submit next week, and there'll be some in the future? But I still think those details need to be worked out about how they get brought to the board as a whole. Yes, we're going to be talking and we're going to be, you know, collaborating, but, um, is the, the work group going to be made up of five board members, two board members, the community, you know, staff, all of those things that I really want to dive into working out, which is why I think the due diligence is necessary.
Okay, colleagues, um, let's get two more speakers unless I'm forced to do otherwise, and then let's vote. Um, Ms. Ahmed.
Oh, I just wanted to address, um, a point that was made, uh, in the focus work group section of this policy, it outlines the process by which a focus work group can come before the board, the staff support, the, what the proposal should look like. Um, and this is almost, almost ninety percent, ninety-five percent the same as what's been presented as a first reader and second reader in January and February respectively.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows, and then we'll vote.
I want to echo Ms. Ahmed's sentiments. Um, we've had this discussion repeatedly, it hasn't changed. We know that focus work groups will allow community experts, uh, teachers and, and professors and people with expertise in the field to, to participate. We know that board members who are interested can participate. None of that has changed since January, we talked about it at the retreat, so these very basic questions, um, we, I think we should know the answer to.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, uh, will now, uh, vote on this, and, um, I think we will take a roll call on this. What I think is a good consensus, this is the alternative, uh, the substitute motion introduced by Mr. Burrows. Please call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed.
Ms. Ellis, could you please read the motion for me? Thank you.
An emotion to table until the, uh, May twenty-first board meeting. March, I'm sorry.
Motion to table until the twenty-first board meeting with the option of board members, go ahead.
Until all considerations are made for the work group.
The, the motion is, just a moment. The motion is, is a substitute motion to the main motion. It is to, um, table this until the next meeting of the Board of Education, which is the twenty-first, with the provision that, um, those board, board members wishing to bring forward work group proposals will have the option of doing so at that meeting. That's what we're voting on. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ahmed. Aye. Ms. Boozer Struthers. Aye. Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks. Mr. Montero.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Ms. Page. Ms. Queen. Ms. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Dr. Thornton.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, colleagues, um, for your, uh, discussion and the decision regarding this matter. Dr. Golson will now move to five-two, the school system calendar.
Yes, item five-point-two requires board approval as second reader.
Thank you. Colleagues, a motion is in order. It's been, uh, says they're second. It's been properly moved and seconded, that the PGCPGCPS calendar for two thousand nineteen, twenty be approved. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Um, those opposing, no. The vote's unanimous, the ayes have it. Uh, colleagues, follow-up items from our January twenty-fourth board meeting and February fifth, the nineteenth, uh, budget work sessions, um, will be in, are posted in board docs for your information. I'd like to have a motion to approve actions taken in executive session on March the seventh. Um, no, I won't talk you about it. Is there a, a second? Properly moved and seconded, that actions taken in executive session, um, tonight be, be approved, those actions involving administrative matters, internal audits, interim CEO report personnel matters. Uh, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. A motion to adjourn is in order. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussions of the adjournment? Hearing on, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. Let's talk about that. Thank you.